Hello. Hi guys, welcome to the late night edition of Lick's Take, today's special edition with the first A D of Delhi Crime series, Vamsi Krishna, let's hear it from him. Thank you for joining us, thank you everyone. We're waiting for the main man. Yes, we'll convey Mahindru Sahab and we have our main guy.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
How are you? I'm good Namrata, how are you?
Good, good, so finally got the shy guy on board.
Well, you asked for it.
So congratulations, massive win.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Super work, super work done.
All great goes to Richie.
So apart from your friends, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
He is the guy, Richie is the guy.
You are his right hand man, so I've heard. So I was coming to that, you know, so apart from your friends, there are a couple of more people who told me that you are a magician on set. I'll, I'll, yes, a magician on set, you are the first A D, the chief A D and you know considering that the entire Delhi was the set, there was no like specific stage or something set and you know you were controlling everything on ground zero, the commotion, the chaos, everything. So I think the, the primary question to you is how did you survive all that?
You know, Richie. In your third, fourth standard, you will look at those magic shows where a rabbit just comes out of the hat. That's, that's probably the inspiration behind being the magician, but there is nothing as such called a magician, it's just that you've got to believe in magic and whatever that magic could be. It could be, you know, finishing a day of shoot, it could be writing a script, it could be anything. But at the end of the day, it is magic anyway, unless we term magic to be something different. I mean, I believe it's all magic anywhere, converting a city of Delhi into a set, it's, it is probably magic.
And I think that your prep time was really miniscule.
Talking about prep time.
You didn't get any prep time?
To be honest, we finished a shoot with, it was a very small, little cute film by Megha, we finished it on the, probably the end of November, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh November and the next morning, they were a bunch of similar people on the new film called Delhi Crime. And all of us had just read one episode, no, I think all of us had read just two episodes. And December sixth to January seventh or eighth, that was our prep time, probably twenty-six to thirty days. In between, you know, give and take Christmas and New Year and all that thing, twenty-six days for eight episodes. Yeah, I mean, that was the prep time.
Punishing.
Challenging. Challenging, but again, all of us believed in magic, that's it.
You made it come true.
I mean, you have everything written, you have everything set in stone, you have everything ready for you, all you have to do is just go and shoot it. Richie has worked on it for five years, the actors have been cast, they're brilliant, such experienced people. All you have to do is shoot, so just go ahead and shoot, that's it.
You know, you guys are such a gracious and such a humble team that whoever I'm interviewing, you know, from this, this, this project is just saying, I was telling Saintha also yesterday that even Sridhi and you know everybody that you guys are so humble, also you guys have rehearsed these lines as well that you know.
No, there's nothing to rehearse about it, it's, it's clearly just that when you have a bunch of good people wanting to do good things and a good person comes, like-minded people, all, I mean, whatever you want to term it. Just a bunch of people wanting to do good things and there's one person who's come to you with something extraordinary. You expected good, but you've just got extraordinary, what are you supposed to do? You've got butterflies and dragonflies and everything in your stomach together, so you're just going to, you know, spirit out and show it in your work. I think all of us were hungry, hungry not in terms of, I think none of us hardly ate on set, but all of us were hungry in terms of work. And in terms of good work and all of us, each, each single, like every single person was just wanting to do anything and everything possible to make this happen. Whether it was twenty-five days of prep time, whether it was, you know, an overnight thing where you make a jacket and you make a, a uniform or just create a set or convert the whole city of Delhi into a set, it was all overnight, yeah.
So you know, you, you guys just finished, I mean, you had finished the odds and that was like this quirky coming of age, really light-hearted, fun film and then transitioning into something so serious, something so dark and so, you know, profound. How was that transition for you, Vamsi?
Well, if you honestly ask me, then work is work, whether it is quirky, whether it is, you know, even if you're shooting the most funniest scenes that you've seen on films, the process behind it is the same, we think we're working in the creative industry, we are in this whole, you know, thing in our head that man under some creative work, but the matter of fact is that it is the most monotonous job ever, being a part of the crew of any film set is the most monotonous job, but how are you going to make it interesting? You, five days before you were shooting the funniest scene ever, you were laughing your ass off and today you're shooting a scene where it's just going to, it's so gut-wrenching that you don't know how to react to the scene. There is, I don't think there needs to be a proper transition to the kind of content that you're doing, you just got to
focus.
Read it, adapt it and just do it. Content is content, it is all in the director's head, in the writer's head, in the actor's head that this is creative. For people who are making this happen, it is the same process, you're going through the same process of production, finding a location, finding this. The actors are doing their job, the directors are doing their job, we are doing our job, that's it. As long as one is just doing whatever it is that is expected out of those people, you're contributing your best, that's it.
So there was this Instagram story that you had only posted and Vidant had also shared the same with me and it was this India Gate scene. And you were like kind of trying to disperse the crowd or just trying to direct and navigate the crowd into a certain position. How was that? How many people were there on that, on that?
Well, that was a big, that was a big fight with production and director and everything. We had, we had to show a crowd of twenty, thirty thousand, but that's clearly not possible, we could afford a certain amount and then there were a lot of discussions about, you know, let's do it in V F X and this and that and all that.
Right.
Though, we had around fifteen hundred extras, if I'm not wrong, around twelve hundred plus another two, three hundred.
Three thousand?
No, fifteen hundred, two thousand, around, around fifteen hundred to two thousand, around two thousand people. And had to get them at four A M in the morning and that was one of the biggest setups in the whole series, like, you know, all the eight episodes, this particular India Gate section was, was, I mean, it was everything, it was just two days of shoot and shooting at India Gate is not a joke.
No.
I mean, hats off to production that they got that exact lane right in front of India Gate where the entire incident had happened. But shooting with these fifteen to, fifteen hundred, two thousand people and creating a sense that they were, let's say, you know, many more than that, they were around five, six thousand or seven thousand, was purely, purely something which required proper planning and that was just possible because the clarity with which the director and the D O P function. And the clarity with which, you know, okay, listen, we have just one lane, we have one water tanker and we have around hundred cops, what are we going to do with two thousand people and how are we going to do it? So the whole planning of it was, I still remember we were sitting, we were wrecking somewhere in Chandni Chalk for some other location and post that we were sitting in a small Haldiram's kind of a place and that's where Richie drew out the whole thing on a tissue paper that, listen, this is India Gate and this is the lane. I said, Richie, we can get a paper and pen, no, 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 it's fine, it's fine, he's, he's that sort of a guy, he was just drawing the whole thing on a tissue paper. This is India Gate, this is the lane, we have two thousand people and we have one and a half days to shoot it, how are we going to do? And he did the whole breakdown for it, like here I would need four hundred people, here I need seven hundred people, here I need two thousand people. Or here, and this is one shot which will need the whole crowd and everyone. So now you have everything in place, how are you going to, you know, make sure that this is going to happen?
Right.
We, we, I think the whole A D team, the whole production, almost the whole crew reached at three thirty-four in the morning. And we have, I really have to thank one person on this particular day, Avni Batra, she was our, you know, she was our moral support, she was everything for the direction team. She was there on that particular day to ensure that thing because, you know, we are a bunch of amateurs trying to make Delhi Crime happen. This is honesty, this is pure honesty.
You guys are.
From, from producers to H O Ds to, you know, the, the whole crew, which is literally a bunch of amateurs coming out of this quirky little film that, yes, we've done something beautiful. And here you are, you're not making sure two thousand people do this whole riot scene happen and there's a water cannon which you have to get the permission of the government to, the army and the government to help you get that water cannon and all that thing. And you reach at four thirty A M in the morning and there's hardly anything. There are people coming in, there are people coming in, your stomach slowly, you know, is trying to, I don't know how it's going to happen, I don't know how it's going to happen. But as the day goes by, you realize that all that planning that you've done on a tissue paper, on those pieces of paper while you're eating chole batura, all those things come in place right now. Without those plannings, without those things, you know, being in place, without the paperwork being in place, nothing on set is going to actually function. Because if you see the functioning of a set, each one is doing their job anywhere.
Right.
The costume guys are getting the people ready, the, you know, the junior coordinators getting the extras and the A Ds are getting those guys, that everything is going to happen, everyone's going to function the way it is every day. But to ensure that all this is going to happen at a, in this specific, you know, period of time.
Yes.
That just requires focus and awareness. There were, there were so many shots that I couldn't tell you that it was entirely cheated because of camera, it was entirely cheated because we took someone else's perspective, that's all, that, all, all those things happen as you go along the day. But I think proper planning and people just wanting to do that, we have to, we, we have no other option than to do it.
So I really want to ask you, when you guys were sitting in Chandni Chalk and Richie was drawing the map, mapping it out on a piece of paper, on a tissue paper, what did you feel at that time? Like, did you feel intimidated by this whole, oh my gosh, how is it going to be or you were like? I mean, did you?
I was like, ab to lag gaya humare, I don't know how it's going to happen. Yeah, yeah, because we know, see, the earlier, the whole thing was that this whole sequence of the India Gate was supposed to be done in one day. And then the discussion began that, listen, we cannot do it in one day.
Right.
We need two days, so the only thing is you get India Gate kind of a location on Sundays, there is no other day that you can, you know, ask for permissions for this particular kind of a location. Now, there is no turning back, you've written the scene, you've read the scene and you've imagined it in your head. And there are ten other people you're answerable to that, you know, each person comes to you asking, okay, where is that going to be set up, where is this going to set up? When do you need those two thousand people? You don't have answers to all of these.
Yeah.
But all you can do is that, listen, we're going to figure it out, we will figure it out. Every single thing on Delhi Crime or any other, most of the projects gets figured as you're, you know, just getting along the day. Or you have to just go with, I mean, at least I go with just this one motive of, you've got to make your day, there's nothing else. You were sitting and researching for five years, you are writing it for, you know, with so much intricacy in your dialogue and so many things. But all you're given is those ten hours to shoot, out of which you shoot for like probably seven to eight hours. Those eight hours for, for you to execute this scene, that's it, there is no other, you know, it's, it's like you're like one of those horses which is tied with
Yeah.
Make, make your day, make your day, make your day, that's it, there's nothing else. And then of course, what matters is the kind of people you have, we were surrounded with a bunch of extraordinarily human beings. Starting from Richie Mehta to Killian, to Apurva, Pooja, Sanjay, Parinas and the whole A D team. Every single person and the, and all of, all of the H O Ds, they are just extraordinary people, why am I saying extraordinary? Because firstly Delhi Crime kind of a show, a, a show like Delhi Crime was not kind of executed in India. Yes, there have been big films, there have been, you know, big, big budget films happening, but a series of this sort which is so just to the point and just getting, trying to understand the whole police system and everything was probably not done. So first figuring that out, that, listen, you're not doing something different, you're doing the same thing, you're doing the way all your projects have been.
Yes.
First coming down to that reality and then just giving in all that you can. And also most of the crew, the kind of training they had and the kind of positions they were in their lives at, while doing Delhi Crime, I think that mattered most. Because including me, it was my, one of those initial first big projects where you're first thing and you just don't know how it's going to happen, so you know, I go back to the, all the training that I've had. All of us go back to the training that we've had and that's what is going to help you.
The application.
The application of, all that training come together on one single day, how are you going to do it? And every single day of your life for the next sixty odd days, how it's going to happen, it just happens, you just have to. Because all of us were willing to be learning.
Learning, yes, that's, that's the key, I think, to learn, you know, to really.
Every morning on set, my brain is empty, like, I don't know, I'm, I'm an intern, I don't know anything.
Like a clean slate, yeah.
Clean slate, because everyone knows the job, yeah, everyone knows what to be done, what is to be done or what is expected out of you. But then if you keep doing that every day, it's going to get monotonous. So how are you going to treat every single day as the first day of your life on set? That is with, with of course the knowledge you've got, for me, till date, it's still the same, like every morning I go, you're just paranoid about a lot of things, but then as you start rolling, as you give the clap, you just, okay, it's going to happen. Quietly, clearly nobody was quiet in Delhi, nobody.
I don't know how.
How are you supposed to make a city quiet? I don't know, I've never learnt that.
A city like Delhi where it's just crazy, it's.
Again, again, Lalit was our on, onset recorder, sound recorder. He was getting into the boots of cars, he was getting into, you know, he was rejecting cars that this car is a small boot, I can't get into it, so you know, that kind of thing that a sound designer or sound recorder is going to help you out, that in spite of all the, because all our locations, we had around eighty-five locations, including the small, small bits. All these eighty-five locations were live locations, it's not like you're in a mehboob studio in Bombay that everyone's going to stay quiet. Neither can the scene security help you nor can, you know, anyone help you, that you're on live locations, how does the sound recorder I don't know, record those things and still make sure that the sound is right? And I think he did a fabulous job.
It was unbelievable. And also it was like an international production, so to say, like, you know, there's so many different you know, countries involved, like Australia, Canada, India and of course the initial part was in London, so everything just kind of came together in, in India.
Everything came together in Delhi, so we were all, I mean, most of us were familiar with Delhi. And in spite of anyone being from Canada, Australia, London, that was all till the part of this, you know, till, till Richie had the script, bound script in place. Post that, it was all sixty-five days plus your prep days in Delhi and beyond the shoot, whatever happened was again across the globe. So I, I think, you know, understanding certain things that are a part of Delhi, like for example, there is this whole thing of jugad in India. And which is, which is, the word jugad is, you know, Delhi owns that word. It, it, it does not belong to Australia, it does not belong to London, it does not belong to Canada.
Yeah.
The word jugad belongs to Delhi, but to try and explain people that, listen, you know, there is no water cannon, but it will be there in the next fifteen minutes. You are, those fifty, those fourteen minutes till the time it has not arrived, you are just hoping that kuch to ho jayega. Something or the other is going to get figured out and all you're doing is just praying that it happens.
Yeah.
So I don't know how jugad functions, but I think that's how it, I mean, you have to own it.
I, I'll tell you a little secret about, I'm sure Pooja is going to kill me, that I'm sharing it on social media. She was known as jugad, why? Because ye nahi ho sakta, this is an impossible thing, but the next day or that, you know, after a few hours, it would be done. And we're like, how did it manage to do that? And she likes, whatever, like, you know.
I, I mean, until recently, we hadn't informed Richie about it, that every, I think, post, or ten days of shoot, the initial ten days of shoot, we had three versions of call sheets, almost on most days. My second A D is just making call sheets the whole day. Why? Because we don't know what we're going to shoot tomorrow. We had the schedule in place, we have everything in place, but even the smallest thing that alters, like, let's say, for example, we had to shoot on a live police station, but the live police station has a lot of, you know, the cells are filled up because there are actually real prisoners there.
Yeah.
So now you don't have that looking, you don't have that cell to shoot for tomorrow.
Right.
And it's not like we're creating a set of the cell, we are shooting in the live cell. There was, I had, this is the most funniest thing which has happened, you know, the only fun part about Delhi Crime was the costume design or the art decor of any space was so real that they were real cops travelling through the highway. And there are the costume assistants and the makeup guys coming and telling, listen, bhaiya, aapne ye dropi aise kyu lagaya hu hai, aap thoda seeda karu usko. You know, set your, aapke headlights kyu on hai, my third A D is going and telling those the, the, the real cops, patrol vans, that your headlights need to be off because the D O P wants it off and he's like, what? What are you talking about? And then we realized that they are, they are extras and they are not, you know, they are, they are the real cops and not our extras. That was hilarious, we were shooting inside the cell where, you know, Jay Singh and the other culprits are inside the cell and the, there's another officer who's just trying to meddle with them. The, the cell right next to it, the light boys go in, they're, they're just finishing the lighting there and that has the real prisoner inside. The cell door is open and we are like, what is hap- because everything looks so real, the guy looks like a.
It was all open for guys to kind of.
No, no, we, we had a live functioning police station and we shot it there and the, the, it was functioning. The, the daily activities of police, we had permissions to shoot, of course, that doesn't mean we stopped the work of the police station, I mean, we are totally blessed for us to not create a set and have the real police station to shoot. Lot of the sound design, you know, which has telephone calls and someone yelling at the background and everything was the real sound which was happening on the station. So it was, it was the most ironic thing, it was funny and but we've got to do it, there's no other option.
Fantastic, absolutely, and you were also, you played a small part of the journalist in the bus.
I had, I, that was, see, I'll tell you, we, that was the, the journalist over that, that section which was shot.
Prithvi Kobi journalist.
Yeah, yeah, because Richie had, I mean, see, I chose that role myself initially when we were prepping in December. But when we shot it, it was almost the last few days of shoot and like, you know, it's out of your head that you were in a mood in December and you're shooting this in March. So it was out of my head that I'm going to do it, but the reason I wanted to do that was because that's the only funniest part in the whole series. There, it was clearly written that this guy over-exaggerates and says the way a lot of channels do. And it has to sound funny, so I said, listen, the whole series is so dark and so this thing, this is the only funniest part and I'm going to do it, but while we shot it in March, trust me, Richie did not give me another take, there's so, there's a lot of fumbling in that, he said, just one take and just let's do it. And I had not, I don't know what to do, I just said and I, I didn't know what to say, who the cameraman was and I said Mukesh Chawda there and I was just like, okay, I mean, it's an, it's an ode to Mukesh Chawda, why not? He's a great guy.
Yeah, I know, actually, I was even so stunned.
Richie, Richie was laughing over it, he's like, good, good, that's what I wanted and he kept that, he kept that word. I said, like Mukesh is going to come tomorrow and just whack me, please don't, please delete that, he said, no, 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 it's great.
Super, so, um. So it was three months that you guys were in Delhi, right?
December, Jan, Feb and early Ma- uh, March, no, no, we finished the end of March, early April we finished.
So Holli was there?
Yes, Holli was entirely there.
Delhi, I mean, I'm like a Delhi.
I was born in Delhi and my college was back in Delhi.
Okay.
But Shri Ram College of Commerce, S R C C.
S R C C, I was in Monday House, Lady Irvin.
Wow.
So coming back to Holli, how was Holli with the crew?
Holli was great, Holli was like any Holli, but the best thing was what we did after Holli, the next day of shoot was I mean, I don't know if I should share this or not, but I will anyway. The next day of Holli was the first time Jay Singh comes to the police station and he's getting interrogated by Vartika and Rajesh, which was one of the scenes where now this is the first time the language of the film changes, it's episode two and you know, the, everything goes like, everything is going to figure, get figured out in episode two and all that.
Yeah.
It was one of those very important scenes of the series. And Johan, the whole camera team, the, the whole director team, all of us had a holy celebration the previous day. Which was beautiful, which was wonderful and coming back to this thing where Johan had something in mind which was like, I'm going to dim all lights down, I'm going to, you know, just center Jay Singh and just make sure that he is the only source of light and everything, it didn't end up that way. Because Johan was scared about the fact that, listen, because holy party was holy party and to get out of those things.
Right.
You, you, I think he probably came out with a new perspective, which in a way helped the whole series, if you notice that the particular sequence in episode two, that's the only scene where the police station is lit up.
Yeah.
And that was entirely opposite of what he intended to do. But in the end, it just worked.
So like how you said, no, as we got along, we, we kind of improvised and, I mean, the entire team improvised and learned each and every day how to do things in the best possible way.
Also that, but I think the most important thing which we kind of figured on set was adaptability. We had to understand and adapt as we go along. There is, there is Richie Mehta working in this, you know, steadfast way, he's, like, his brain is sorted till the end day of shoot. He knows what's going to happen because he's been with the material for like enough time. We were there for twenty-five days and to catch up to what Richie knows is something that all of us had to face as a challenge, but we did it because listen, guys, you have no other option, you have to do it, so when you tell that to yourselves, there is no other way that you can come out of this whole thing that, you know, I'm going to sit today, think and my mind is going to think and my mood is going to happen, that, there's no time for all this. And it, I always believe that it trickles top button, like, you know, if you're director, if you're producer, everyone's just sorted and they just know that this is the only solution, there is no other solution to this. Then you have no other option than to just do it and do it in a way that it doesn't hurt everyone and it satisfies all those things that is needed for a particular scene. We bring into reality a lot of scenes which are just in the heads of people. How you do it is just by knowing and being aware of what is available and what can be done. And I don't know, it just happened.
You made friends, I mean.
I mean, all of us were great.
Of course you guys made friends, but like, you know, deep friendships, bonds.
All, most of us are still working, my entire A D team, like this was the first time I've been working, apart from Parinas, Parinas and I have been working since our very first projects as interns. And most of our projects have been together, she is one person who handles Richie in a way that I don't think anyone else could. Why? Because to, I'm, I'm not saying handling Richie, handling Richie hasn't to be available for reaching for anything and everything. And that, that only Parinas could do, so I was very happy for the fact that this was taken care of. All you have to do is make sure the shoot happens, which is not a big thing, which can just happen, because everyone's doing their jobs. It's, it's like, you know, when you, when you realize that in, in your school, there is a principal who ensures that the school functions till, you know, seven A M till two A M. That's what you have to do, how much ever you hated the principal, you've got to be that now, so it's, it's that kind of a feeling. Friends, of course, all of us are great friends, like Prithvi, Mandar, Animesh, Ajitesh, Harsh, Aparajita. Every name, every single, Tarek, the, the key, light man, Johan, Lakhon, all of us, we, I mean, we, we just finished a film and most of them have been, you know, just jumped into another film, so it was like a continuation for us. Apurva, I mean, I also believe it's because the producers just put in faith, we know this, we know, we bought this, we bought these guys together, now you do whatever you want.
Karlo ab, haan, joke hai.
Karlo ab, yahi hai, so we are also like, haan, yahi hai to abhi bas yahi karenge. And it was great, like, I don't know, coming out of that film to this film.
I'm seeing all the comments, everybody is just loving you, I mean, they love you, I have to tell you this. They are just, we love you. Go sir and everybody, I mean, it's just, I'm just reading the comments as, as you're like speaking and everybody is just like.
Because they are all good human beings, when, when there are good human beings, you, you know, love is a very, love is a term which is beyond just physical love, it's, it's just liking those human beings. And, and you know, when, when we started off this conversation, it was about having this bunch of people. So it's always about finding those bunch of people everywhere. We're not saying that, okay, listen, this bunch of people is like, you know, that's not our motive, this bunch of people is the best ever. Of course, there are hundred other people, hundred other kinds of groups and hundred other kinds of functioning of people. Everywhere or if you go, if you go as an individual to any project that you're, you know, taking up, what is it that you bring in? Not in terms of work, of course, the, the reason they have hired you is because the kind of work you do and you know, the kind of knowledge you have.
Yeah.
That is, that apart, the kind of human being that you are. If you are always a solution-driven person, you will find those people everywhere.
Wow, so well said, solution-driven person.
Yeah, so because there are scenes which are written, like, let's say, the India Gate scene happened and all of us have seen news articles. Yeah, so because there are scenes which are written, like, let's say, the India Gate scene happened and all of us have seen news articles. Everyone's, each department is doing their research on, you know, how this actually happened. The placards were exactly the same placards which were, you know, Mandar make sure, made sure that, the production designer made sure that the kind of placards which, you know, even the color of those things which were written were the same. Smriti ensured that the kind of costumes that those Narayabazi kind of people wore were the same. Now, everyone's done their research. You've got those people, you've got college students, you've got everyone. But now, how are you going to make sure that this happens in that particular time, right? And that happens because, that just happens because, yaad, yahi karna hai and we have to get that sorted. If 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 and if even a single individual is on a different track, that I don't know, man, you figure it out, I mean, it's your job or something, then then you will understand that as you go along, you you, as the day progresses, you will know that this is not happening. Like, as A Ds, what you can best do is make sure that the background action is right. Right, like, there are a bunch of A Ds, uh, the director wants this main actor to walk across this thing and you have to make sure that your background is designed. Now, you can't design background till the time, there is, like, there's got to be adaptability, you know. For you to give that much amount of time to make sure that that extra has understood what he's supposed to do, by the time half a day is over. So, how do you make sure that all those things fall in place?
Maximum.
While the shot is happening, you just, you know, listen, listen, usko vahane se bheje, usko yahan se bheje, all those kind of things. And that's purely, purely because the kind of uh people I've looked up to and kind of people I've learned from. Uh, if that wasn't there, I don't think, you know, this sensibility comes into, it comes into one person and then it trickles down into the whole team.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, in the first, that's what I ensure in the first five, seven days of shoot, make sure that the vibe of the whole set or the vibe of this whole team is set right. You don't have to yell, you know, Richie on the other day on Zoom call had so well said that uh, whatever the kind of pressure a person is facing, there is no need for anyone to, you know, uh, show down the other person or yell at other person for anything. Yes, you you, it's part of your job, you get paid to yell at other people, but not at the cost of self-respect or, you know, showing them that, you know, they don't know how to do it.
One hour, yeah, one hour.
You've always got to just make sure, if you know it, then do it. Simple.
I think you guys drove each other into a single direction, you know, it was just like in in one single focus and one single drive, each one was so individually motivated and driven that it just kind of propelled it in the best possible.
And that's not, that's not because, just because this was Delhi crime and that content was so good, of course, that's there. That's given. As as crew members, that's not, I mean, that is an important part of, you know, who you're working with and what you're working on, what you're trying to say, that is one thing. But we are all crew members. We are making sure that whatever the vision that you've signed up for and what this person is trying to say is executed. That could be Delhi crime, that could be What Are Yours, that could be any film. And your job is to make sure that this happens. Whether it's quirky, whether it is, you know, cut-wrenching, so dark, this thing, you, that is, that is not something that you think of every day. That's the director's job, that's the writer's job, that's the producer's job. What you've got to ensure is that, listen, this particular, you know, break it down. The reason we call those things breakdowns, apart from those mental breakdowns that we have, is the fact that you've broken down those things into days and into hours and into each scenes.
Yeah.
That's your job. Do it, do it right. Simple.
Did anything rile you up? Did you have any kind of, did you have any breakdowns?
So, I'm not, I've witnessed a lot of breakdowns. I've, I mean, this India Gate shoot was one of those biggest things where there was, there was uh Johan shooting it on the camera and there was a stunt sequence with fire and everything happening, you know, so there was, like, everything was taken care of, all those stunt things and all those precautions, precautionary measures, everything was taken care of. The wind just suddenly blew this way towards the camera. So, the fire which was burning, like, you are at a distance, everything is taken care of, but the wind just suddenly blew here. So, the fire is just, the heat from the fire is just blowing onto Johan's legs. So, that was a moment where like, listen, you've taken care of everything, made sure that everything was taken care of. But again, force of nature, you couldn't help it. And his, you know, like, his legs got a little burnt and all that, but again, we took care of those things.
Yeah.
But those are moments you can't, I mean, you can't break down because, arey yaar, ye ho gaya, we've got to stop.
Yeah, unforeseen.
Those are things which you just have to, okay, that's happened, so now let's move on. We have three hours left and we have ten more shots to.
Was he okay? Like, I mean-
Yeah, yeah, he was fine. Johan's, Johan's a mad guy. And why I say mad is because mad, the word mad is beyond being crazy and being whatever. He just, not a single shot in the whole eight episodes uh involved any kind of equipment apart from the camera and the shoulder pad. The whole series has been shot on his shoulder. A lot of people think that it had a steady cam, it had a tripod. There was not a single static shot. All the shots of the film, apart from, I think, two sunrise sunset shots, which I actually took a photo of, where we were at the terrace of something and, you know, we were at terrace of our own hotel building and we had to shoot a sunrise sunset, Madhuban Hotels. We have to thank that hotel though. They have real good French fries, even four A M in the morning.
That's why it was chosen.
No, no, that wasn't the reason it was chosen. It was chosen because that was the only available hotel. Ask me about it. But it's okay, it was a very beautiful like hotel. But uh, there was just two or three shots which were on a steady, uh, which was on a tripod. You know, Johan's like, I need a tripod and all of us are just looking at each other. Tripod? It's been ages that we've heard the word.
Heard the word.
And the way he did all those single shots, you know, when you went for a tech recce, when we, this bunch of people went for a tech recce, we are just figuring, I'm, you know, the first thing that you've learned in life is, okay, what, where are we looking at, what is our angle? You know, you've got to write in permissions and government places, you have to tell them that we're just looking here and we're just using this room. Uh, Richie and Johan go like, yeah, yeah, this is good, this is good. Yeah, so the whole room. So, and you know, and they walk away, they walk away with their, for the next location because on our one day of tech recce had six locations. It's not like we're doing one location and we had seven days to show, you know, do our tech recce. We had like just four or five days to do our tech recce. And every single place we go to, we're like, yeah, we're looking everywhere. You ask Johan, where, you know, is there any spot that we're not looking, I can set up the whole, you know, the base and all those, yes, we'll figure it out that day. So, literally, all the locations that we've been through, because the camera is on his shoulder and because the show is, you know, got that perspective and it's just, you know, I don't know, whatever those creative things are.
Yeah.
Every place we go to, which is, you cannot lock down anything.
Yeah.
And you'll have to fill it, figure out the lockdown on that particular day. There was this particular scene of the, when Jay Singh gets caught for the first time, you know, he's coming through a bus and that's the whole road, that's a live location in Delhi, in the middle of South Delhi. Uh, we are inside the car, looking out.
Didn't people crowd? Uh, did they crowd around the, they did?
We, we, we just hid it well. And you know, a location like that, you can, you will not know, like, each take has a different, you know, you're looking at different things.
Yeah.
Because the way actor performs is the way the camera is gonna move. And it's not like it's designed that way. It gets designed as we go along, as we finish the rehearsal is when we design the shot. So, hello, guys, just be open for anything and everything. Wherever you guys are peeping out from, just hide.
Wow, wonderful. What do you think about the M Es? Are you gonna say something about that?
Congratulations to all of us, I guess. Because for us, Delhi crime journey is, you know, it's 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 not like it's over because the M Es, you know, we've won at the M Es. M Es was a, it's it's like your additional, you know, the magician took out another rabbit from the hat. All those things are over and then he just took out another thing. So, M Es is like one of those additional icing on the cake kind of thing, but the day we wrapped Delhi crime was something when, I mean, I can never forget that day, but that particular day, a lot of people had this kind of a realization that you, you know what you've shot. And Richie had actually, you know, we were all standing there and Richie had promised us that I will take this to places and I will make sure that this is satisfying enough for all of your hard work. And he made it happen. Of course, with a lot of other people behind Richie, but uh, there's one guy who's always the leader and he is the leader.
I saw your post, yes. He's the man, the man.
The man, he is the man, the man, he is the man. There is no other, you know, you, I don't know if there are words beyond it, I am not aware of it.
How lovely, how nice. I mean, you guys made it possible for him, I mean, for all of us, actually. It it really is something that, you know, how it is M E speech, he said, let's not forget. Let's really not forget why we made this in the first place. And I think this really put the icing on the cake and, you know, uh, so I I was sharing this with a lot of people that uh the the incident happened in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, I traveled to the U S for, you know, a trip. And a cab driver in Vegas, he knew about this incident. And he was so moved by it and he was so angry, you know, with with the Indian media for having shared this news worldwide. And why are you guys doing this? Because it's something that's, you know, really perplexing us that how did it happen? Not that things don't happen over there also, but it became such a global issue that probably now has really redeemed, you know, the entire force. And um, you know, this, and of course, with the judgment coming this year also.
Yeah.
That probably is your award, you know, that is your award, you know, before the M Es.
I mean, there is a reason why also Delhi crime has won a particular award under the, you know, category of best drama series. What we intend, I mean, I cannot speak for what Richie, you know, uh, started off writing this and why he started off acting this and why this particular topic. The way it was fictionalized into a drama series is what I think, you know, all of us can talk about. Because we are talking about hope, you know, as I think one of those interviews we had always, uh, most of them have always mentioned that the series at the end also has this entire theme of hope. Whether or not we have the theme uh running through the series.
Yeah.
This incident has been dramatized so well. The the incident as in, by incident, I mean, the whole journey of the 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 police force has been dramatized so well that not a single shot of the incident was there, which you cannot also talk about or show. It's something which all of us connect to so personally in many different ways. And that kept aside, the kind of justice that each one of us could do with the given content.
Yeah.
With the given limitations and with that sensitivity and with that, you know, sensibility in fact. It's something uh we were close to, we were, we were kind of close to achieving that through the entire process of uh Delhi crime. Uh, I mean, we were shooting at places where, I mean, I don't know how to tell this, but you know, when when the 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 place where the opening scene where they are thrown and the kind of the the road which we shot in was the same road which actually the incident happened. We shot it, uh, it was a night shift where we shot it approximately at the same time, ten twenty-three. So, all those kind of things are something which you don't know how to digest, but then now you have a twelve hour, you know, you come down to work. Now you have a twelve-hour shift, you have a content, you have to do it. There, a lot of times you might get carried away by so many other factors and every film will have a different uh kind of thing to offer. Even if it's the quirky kind of thing or if it's the dark kind of thing, every kind of film will have a certain kind of memory. Like, I remember we were shooting odds of Omega and Mega chose to shoot in that same forest where she grew up, you know, she used to spend her time there. And I would say like, okay, it's such a beautiful scene to shoot there, but you know, she would go back her memory lane, right?
Yeah.
For her, it's a thing, but at that particular day, we cannot go back to all those kind of things. We have to just finish those scenes and then rejoice those moments of, arey, what a beautiful forest. Similarly, like how you have a beautiful forest where you have this Casper kind of, you know, ghost kind of a feeling, which is actually really good. You have these kind of locations as well, which the incident happened here, you're supposed to shoot here, you put there. As crew members, you are not allowed, I don't believe that we are allowed or we are supposed to take that into our head and to, you know, while we're doing the work, because work is work. All those things happen, you're doing this, you signed up for this, go ahead and do it. You can't have your breakdowns at that time. Go back to your room and have it, it'll probably work, but not at the expense of work, not with those twelve hours, not those days of set.
So, let's share one more thing with you. So, you know, you remember that party scene at uh, in the movie?
Yeah, you were there.
You remember? You directed me.
That was, we we had, we didn't have budgets to get these beautiful-looking people. We called in everyone we could. Nishreen, uh, Mega, Apurva, we are just calling, hey, what are you doing? Acha, come off to, I I know a lot of people on this chat right now who were there at that party.
Yeah.
Because you're just calling all your friends and that's how you created that scene.
And that was my first time on a set. And uh-
And I was yelling, that was my worst day of shoot because we didn't finish the day.
I I'll tell you after, whether when I, when we meet or, you know, if ever we kind of, you know, speak on the phone or when we meet the exact thing because I I think it is too long for me to share, but I can never forget. Uh, and Apurva called and she's saying, what are you doing this day? And, you know, just come and there's a party scene. I'm like, oh, my god, I'm gonna be in a movie and all this. And it turned out to be like such a, I mean, not a disaster, but it-
It was such a beautiful, when you look at it in the film, it's such a, it's one of the most beautiful scenes with such one, all those people you know, who, you know, live in Kar, Bandra and Andiri, all of those people's house who you go to party, they are in that particular scene. And like Nishreen's friends are there, my friends are there, Mega's friends are there, Apurva's friends are there, and all of them know each other because they were in that particular scene. That's the most hilarious part.
It was fun. It was too much fun.
Yeah, we call it, you know, just go by the road and just go casting. We did it on our first film with Nishreen also and there was a party scene, we just went on the road, we went to a party on a Friday night. We found those uh wonderful-looking people and then we just like, call them up, we're like, can you come to a shoot day after tomorrow? We're just shooting in this beautiful house and they came. We had thirty people joining us on that party and that scene looks wonderful, which a lot of extras cannot give you. These like human beings, partying somewhere, just came along. And now the thing is, when you get back, when you get down to work, you have to make sure those those thirty people that you've promised come in. Because if they don't, it's a, it's on your head.
It's on your head.
You can't, you can't say, you you have to find those thirty, at the end of the day, you find those thirty interesting-looking people, that's it. Whether you found them in the party, whether you know them through work, that is none of the directors or, you know, the producers' business. You've got thirty people, make sure that they are there, that's it.
More of them than you do that, you know, you kind of do deliver, you know, and uh-
Yeah, these are, these are kind of things we take up on our head and then the moment we take up, we realize, damn it, why did I do it? Why did I say yes to it? But then it happens. That is the creative part of it, right?
That is the creative.
Okay, I I will make sure that this happens. Abhi, abhi bhukto, karu. Ah, karu.
One more thing, Vamsi, before we leave. Um, so I saw that, you know, you are a great fan of poetry and Gulzar Sahab.
No, I just enjoy, I mean, Gulzar Sahab is Gulzar Sahab, but uh, I try to write.
No, there is this, there is this line that you really like and you've mentioned that on one of your posts and if you could share that.
You've been stalking me.
I've been stalking you. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, good.
No, but because even I, I and, you know, really found it very, very um, kind of interesting because I myself am a fan of Gulzar Sahab. You know, his his poetry is so deep and so, um, I would say, it kind of pulls out the emotions from the depths of your life. So, I think I really connected with that through your, you know, your post and I was like, oh, my god, this is something that I have to ask you. Which is your favorite composition of his, one of the favorite, I'm, I I know you can't kind of single out one, but.
Wow. Uh, this is a very, this is like, among all these questions, I think this is the most difficult question that you've asked.
The answer is there.
Choosing a favorite, the choosing the favorite Gulzar Sahab lines, uh-
You know that, so sal wala, ek din.
The, that's, that's one among the favorite. I think beyond that, there's also this line from Kamine. Humne to gilheri ke jhute matur bhi khaye the. I think those, there are those two lines in the the film Kamine, I think those two lines and and uh
Yeah.
Was, dil to, dil to bachcha hai. Was that out? Yes, of course, it was Gulzar Sahab.
And it just- I mean, I I really love it.
But this, I'll tell you, the the reason I connect to this more, this line, humne to gilheri ke jhute matur khaya the, was recently, last year, when I was shooting for a film in Sri Lanka, uh, there was this person, Shoma, who was on that film, I think. She was there with me and she's, she knows Vishalji and Gulzar Sahab quite well and she's also an ardent fan of uh Gulzar Sahab. We will, we finished a night shoot and we were sitting in the morning, just, you know, sitting by the beach and we were just chilling for a while. And a lot of squirrels came by there and there was some chana kind of matur kind of thing. It wasn't exactly matur, but it was something like chana and matur.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the moment when I actually noticed a squirrel, you know, chabowing a a matur and this thing and that line just hit so hard. Humne to gilheri ke jhute matur, like, how can a, like, I'm sure Gulzar Sahab also would have gone through the same experience of watching a squirrel uh eat a matur. So, humne to gilheri ke jhute matur khaye the, was something which stuck to my heart, like, this line is just beyond something. So, I think that line-
Sense of observation that, you know, you observe something so, which could be missed, like, so something so insignificant and, you know, make too much meaning out of it. Wonderful.
That, that particular line and of course Gulzar Sahab is, I mean, I will cry the day I look at him and I will meet him, but he is beyond something. I mean, right now, I can't think of some of his lines, but
Of course.
That man is just amazing.
Amazing.
How does he think and how does he write and how does he observe, like, gilheri ke jhute matur, someone has to observe it in his life. Only then can he, he or she write it, you know. There is no other way someone can notice this and write this and compose this in a way that it becomes a song which is just in your head.
Batao. Really. Batao. Really. Thank you so much, Vamsi. Thank you for joining. So Richie wasn't.
Thank you, Namrata.
Wasn't that bad, no?
Yeah, I mean, I never had such chats about any kind of journey or anything because for us, it's just work. Keep working, move ahead, keep working, move ahead. Of course, you should in retrospect, you know, look at your work. But thank you very much and I would really, really on this. So-called social media platform, thank all the cast and crew of Delhi crime. My A D team, which was fabulous, from Parina's to Ajitesh, Animesh, Apurajita, Harsh, everyone. Uh, uh, Apurva and Pooja for believing in us. They believed in a lot of mad people. I don't know how, I think they are, they are also a little mad. Which is, they are, they're little, you know, I'm fine by, I'm really okay by saying this thing. They, Sanjay Bachchan, Apurva, Pooja have got something which is twisted, which is great, which works, which works fantastically for a lot of people. They just have this belief, you know, certain people have blind faith, like you love a person, you have this blind faith that I love this person. They have this blind faith on crew, which I don't know how it happens, but it just works. And the belief that they had on us is the reason we are here chatting. Simple, as simple as that.
He only said that Vamsi is a magician and, you know, she, she's so happy that you came on and we all are of course happy that, you know, you did this and. Came out of your, you know, this, this zone of, I'm not gonna do it. But thank you so much and all your friends also. Thank you so much, guys, for joining. And they love you and he loves you too. I'm sure he's gonna say that.
Love, love to everyone. Spread love.
Thank you.
Ten good bites.
Hope to, hope to see your future projects also.
Yes, Insha Allah.
All the best.
Thank you, Namrata. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye.